We are waiting on Sam, I guess. False alarm, we'll wait until the Board Attorney is here, please bear with us. Good afternoon, the time is 1:31 PM, the date is Thursday, October 3rd, 2024. It's another beautiful day here in paradise, and I'm pleased to call to order the regularly scheduled October meeting of the City of West Palm Beach zoning Board of Appeals. I'll ask our Board Secretary to first call the roll, please.
Alfred Fields.
Present.
Christopher Cammerer.
Present.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess.
Here.
Dana Picot.
Here.
Emmeline Savage.
Okay, we do have a quorum, so we'll now ask everyone to please rise and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our September meeting. They were included in our board packet, so hopefully everyone here has had a chance to review them. First entertain if there are any additions, corrections, or modifications to the minutes, and if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Approval of the minutes was moved by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Picot. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. We'll next go to a report from our Planning Division staff, please.
Good afternoon, Rick Green Development Services Director, a couple things. Firstly, I'd like to welcome Ms. Savage as our new board member, she's joining us today. Secondly, we had a vacancy with our Assistant Director of Development Services, so I'm very pleased to announce that we have hired Anna Aponte as the Assistant Director of Development Services. Anna has been with the city approximately 20 years. In that time, she worked primarily as the city urban designer. She was the face of the downtown, working with the Downtown Action Committee for nearly 20 years. The CRA stole her from me about a year ago, and she served as the Deputy Director. So when this position became available, I had an opportunity to steal her back. So we're glad to have her, we're inundating her with information right now, but, Anna, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Now move to Board Chair comments, and first would also like to echo the welcome to Emmeline Savage for joining our board today, so glad to have you here. And also congrats to Anna Maria Aponte on your position, so congrats to you. Last, we did recognize our new Secretary last meeting, Jasmine Hodgson. This is her first, she was in the audience last time, this is her first time sitting up on the dais, so welcome and glad to have you onboard. Next, I'll just go through the procedure for the hearing today, just so that everyone in the audience is familiar with how the meeting will be conducted. The matters before the ZBA are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation and then answer questions from the board. The applicant will then be followed by city staff, who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board, and then will answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment, with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, including emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. The applicant will then have opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed, and the board will go into executive session for discussion, motion, and then a vote. And as a reminder, four affirmative votes are required for approval on all items in front of this board. With that, that concludes my comments. So we'll now move into the declaration of ex parte communication. I'll start on the right with Board Member Fields to declare any ex parte communication on matters that were in front of us today.
As to Alfred Fields, as to matters on the agenda... Case number 3340, case number 3341, and case number 3443. I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an independent investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert's opinion. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of this record.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cammerer.
As to case number 3440, case number 3441, and case number 3443, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Board Member Burgess.
Thank you, as to case number 3441, I'll need to recuse myself from that case as I do regular business with the applicant's representative unrelated to this project. But for full disclosure, I did receive a written communication on that project back in April, which I didn't respond to. For case 3440 and 3443, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Board Member Picot.
As to matter case number 3440, 3441, 3443, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, and Board Member Savage. Thank you. For my disclosures, item 3440 is an item that I'll be recusing myself from, and I believe I may have Form 8B on file already from prior meetings, but if not, I will ensure that it's on file. With regard to the other two cases, which are case number 3441 and 3443, I have not had ex parte communications, I have not received written communications, I have not conducted an investigation, I have not made a site visit, I have not received expert opinions, and I wish, I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. With that, we'll now move to the public hearing portion of the meeting, and we'll need to swear in anyone wishing to speak on this item, so, on any of the items on the agenda. So anyone wishing to speak, please rise and be sworn in by our Board Secretary.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, thank you, you may be seated. The first item is item B under Continued Cases, B1, zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3440. We'll have the, I will pass the gavel to the Vice Chair to run this item, and we'll have the Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Tom Hargret of Kimley Horn on behalf of the City of West Palm Beach for a 2.1 foot and 14 and 1/2 foot variance from Section 94-204 2A and 2B of the City's zoning and land development regulations within the front and side setbacks to allow the installation of three tennis courts at the existing South Olive Park tennis complex. The approximately 12.28 acre site is located at 345 Suma Street within Commission District Number 5, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Okay, so let's start with the applicant. Could you introduce yourself, and you can make your presentation.
So sadly, I'm not Tom Hargret, but I'm Jonathan Hague with Kimley Horn on behalf of the city, address is 477 Rosemary Avenue. I'm here for you, I'm here today to seek a variance to setbacks in the front and side setbacks. So our scope is, we've got three proposed tennis courts directly south of an existing nine court complex. They're including some new surfacing, we're putting new nets in, new fencing, some shade covers for the bench seating that's out there, as well as a new parking area. Right now, this, the area is currently a kind of a dirt slash gravel area where some people park, that's just south of all the tennis courts. This is our proposed plan, the area in the kind of shaded reddish is the extent of the existing parking lot. The existing tennis clubhouse, it was recently constructed, is just to the east of that. And south of all of that is where the new expansion is proposed to happen. So we've got three new tennis courts, which are exactly in line with the tennis courts that are there today, as well as parking area, and this is to help amend some of the parking that's already on the site, as well as kind of formalize the parking that was currently a little more informal with the gravel area. So what we're looking for is, again, a variance request specifically regarding the 25-foot yard front and side setbacks for the three tennis courts and the parking area. On the image to the left-hand side is showing what we were able to get with the regulation-sized tennis courts, we've got about 22, almost 23 feet to the property line. And on the west side, where we're kind of staying with the existing condition in order to kind of maximize the amount of tennis courts we were able to get and keep in line with the existing fencing along that whole west property line, we're a little bit less, or a little bit over 10 foot, so it's 10.8 feet. So without modifying or removing the existing courts to the north and expanding the tennis courts facilities to the south, we could not really achieve the setback requirement for this project. Also, the same could be said for the front yard setback as well. In order to keep a regulation-sized tennis court, we weren't able to provide that extra, what, almost two, two feet, two and a half feet, to get that setback. So, you know, per the staff report, the tennis courts are proposed to be in the most functional location based on the configuration of the original tennis facility, and therefore would require a front yard setback no greater than 22.9 feet, and that the existing yard, side yard setback is a legal non-conforming condition as the tennis courts were constructed prior to the establishment of the current 25-foot setback. So in order to align with those proposed courts and keep the courts in the existing configuration, or the configuration we have proposed as well, a 10-foot eight, 10.8-foot setback for the three new courts would be required. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so Board members, Board Member Fields, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No questions.
And Board Member Burgess, do you have any questions of the applicant?
So it's not strictly related to the variance, but the tree impact for just tree removal, replacement mitigation, is it onsite, offsite? What are the impacts to the vegetation onsite?
We've largely saved most of the trees, there was, I believe there was one, the, one or two we're removing based on the configuration of the driveways of the new parking lot. There are some trees that were planted along the, I guess, the west side of that driveline that goes up into the traffic circle, I'll get it on the screen right now. I don't recall exactly how many trees we've removed, but I believe we've mitigated onsite for all of those.
Thank you, no other questions for the applicant. Board Member Picot.
No questions.
And Board Member Savage.
Just one question, is there any concern in pickleball courts as opposed to tennis courts? Because then they would be within, you know, it would be smaller, and there would be no need for a variance?
That was the original idea for this park, but there was, I guess, the public feedback and the input we got during design revealed that tennis courts were more desired by the people who used the facility. And that pickleball would be put somewhere in another facility within the park system.
Okay, I don't have any questions. Any other questions for the applicant, by the Board members? Okay, I guess the city.
All right, good afternoon, Board members and everyone. Eric Cologne, Associate Planner, for the record here. Today I'm presenting ZBA case number 3440, a front and side setback variance for the installation of three tennis courts at the South Olive Park complex. So the applicant did a good job and covered mostly aspects of the variance. Just so I have a few pictures of the current conditions of the site along Suma Street. It's currently, as mentioned, a vacant patch of dirt and grass used as parking. As the tennis courts are an existing legal non-conforming structure, the improvements are designed to be an extension of the existing facilities within this recreational zoning district, and thus will not create conflict with the existing character of the area. This is a video of what the site currently looks like. To reduce potential impacts, the courts will be in compliance with required landscape buffer of five feet in the front and side setbacks, and the courts will also provide an additional 25 parking spaces to accommodate demand and deter on-street parking. So with that being said, staff is therefore recommending approval of the variance standards found in Section 94-38 D6 from the City's zoning regulations. Thank you.
Okay, Board Member questions. Board Member Fields, do you have any questions of the city?
No questions.
Board Member Burgess, do you have any questions of the city?
Yes, this may be a question for parks, but the hours of operation of the facility, is this nighttime lit up tennis after dark, or?
So I'm not sure on the exact hours of the facilities, but there are lights that are being provided per the site plan.
Again, are those on an automatic timer, shut off, like their current configuration?
Hi, my name is Lorenzo Rivera, I am with the Innen and Urban Department and Park and Recreation. The lights, there is going to be improvement on the lights, and they are going to be on a timer, so by 10:30 the lights will be off, so that's the time that it is now, and that's the time that will remain as it was.
Okay, thank you, and so the light fixtures will be closer to that neighboring yard, but the automatic timer will help regulate the hours of operation. And has there been any, I'm not sure if this is the question for staff or for the board, but have there been any neighbor concerns of, for lighting or acoustic?
The only neighbor concern wasn't for lighting, it was just how the site was going to accommodate the additional traffic, because there were concerns of additional on-street parking being used by the community, but as soon as we let them know that there are an additional 25 parking spaces, they were supportive of the changes.
Okay, no further questions for staff, thank you.
Board Member Picot, do you have any questions of the city?
No questions.
And Board Member Savage, any questions for the city?
No questions.
Okay, I don't have any questions either. So now we'll move to public comments, is there anybody here who would wish to be heard on this matter? Okay, see none. Ms. Hodgson, have we received any, maybe I'm not sure if it's a question for you or for the city, have we received any letters or emails with regards to this matter from the public?
It would be Eric's answer.
Okay.
No emails or letters for this project.
Great, thank you. Okay, so I think that concludes the public portion of this, we go to executive session. All right. Any comments, Mr. Fields?
No comments, I'm satisfied with the information.
Any comments, Mr. Burgess?
No other comments, thanks.
Any comments, Ms. Picot?
No.
And Ms. Savage, any comments?
No.
All right, so, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move that the zoning Board of Appeals grant ZBA case number 3440, a request by Tom Hargret of Kimley Horn on behalf of the City of West Palm Beach for a 2.1 foot and 14.2 foot variance from Section 94-204 2A and 2B of the City's zoning and land development regulations within the front and side setbacks to allow the installation of three tennis courts at the existing South Olive Park tennis complex. This motion is based on the testimony presented, along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitute competent substantial evidence. The Board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in Article 2, Section 94-38 D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Does anyone wish to second the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, it's a tie between Mr. Fields and Ms. Picot, that's the seconding. So Ms. Hodgson, can you take a vote, please? Oh, and for this matter, because Mr., the chairperson has recused himself, Ms. Savage is a voting member for this vote. Okay.
Alfred Fields.
Yes.
Christopher Cammerer.
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess.
Yes.
Dana Picot.
Yes.
Emmeline Savage.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, and the variance is granted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we now move to new items, that's item, first up is item C1, zoning Board of Appeals case number 3441. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Jeffrey Brosser on behalf of Hans Wigmans for a variance from Section 94-72A2 of the City's zoning and land development regulations for an addition to a single-family residence located within a single-family low-density SF7 residential district. The subject property consisting of approximately 0.29 acres is located at 308 Colonial Road within Commission District Number 5, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. I will now first ask the applicant to come up and make a presentation. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jeffrey Versour, I'm with Versour and Drable Architects. Office is 224 DeTura Street, Suite 908. Let's see, there we go, okay. So that, we're asking for a seven-point, unfortunately I forgot my notes, but we're asking for a rear yard setback variance back here. Our addition is a one-car garage with a cabana, feature cabana up there. This is Martin Avenue, this is Colonial Road. The front door and everything, and the whole house has always been designed as, as well as the address, to be on the front here. The issue we ran into, oh, by the way, I've worked on this house with these clients since 2008, doing various additions under the original setback of the front setback being here and the corner setback being there, whoops. We did this master bedroom addition in 2008, I believe. We did this little bathroom addition here in 2014. This Loja addition, I think in 2017, and this is the current project here. There is, there is no garage on the property. So how we came about with this variance request, I believe there must have been a code change through, through that time of me working on the project. The issue is, is the current code says the shortest length on any corner lot is going to be considered their front yard, so therefore that's how you orient the front yard, or the setbacks. Unfortunately, for the Wigmans, this side, which is the solid side of the house, and has always been the side of the house, is 110 feet, and their front is 117 feet. Since this is the shorter one, this triggers a front yard setback, actually on our side, and this would be the 15-foot corner setback, which is the front of the house. So since that's the front, this has to be considered the rear of the house, not, which is actually the side. So again, we're asking for this variance. Currently, I have it sited 5'6" off of the property line. An original side would have been 5 feet. But the actual setback required is 11.7 feet, 10% of the depth, which is actually the width. I hope I'm not confusing everybody. So that's about it, in a nutshell, the house again was built in 1958, or 50, yes, 58. The owners have been living in it, I think, since 2000. They have no plans of moving, they've, you know, constantly upgraded the house, and one of the things that the owners wanted me to echo to the Board was, you know, they feel like since all these houses in the, in the south end are being bought up for enormous amounts of money, and they're just all getting demolished in this case, we want to keep the house. Everybody seems to be demolishing these houses and putting these giant monsters on these sites, building a setback to setback. Whereas here, we, I'll show you some pictures, we have a nice one-story house that I believe is in scale for the neighborhood. So I'll go on to the next drawing. This is an existing landscape plan, you'll see some of the pictures at the end of the presentation. They have a very elaborate amount of very nice landscaping. There's a lot going on in this back area here, you'll see it in the pictures. We didn't want, the owners did not want to push the addition further back, which actually wouldn't matter because of our variance, but they're mindful of their existing landscape and did not want, this was the only area we could really put it, that wasn't going to destroy any old existing trees. Here's the floor plan, partial floor plan, the rest of the house is over here. Here's our garage, at the moment it's a long garage, they might park two cars tandem in it. In the future, they had thought about doing a cabana here and then a one-car garage, but that's not on the plan at the moment. Here's our side elevation, that would be the east elevation, that's the length of the garage. This is the front of the house. Here's the front elevation of the house, there's the front door, there's my master bedroom. addition from 2008, and there's the proposed garage. Here's the other side looking from the east, there's the garage in the background. And this is the rear of the house, this is the existing master bedroom, the main part of the house, this nice covered loggia that they wanted, and there's the bathroom in the middle, there's a little bathroom that they added for their daughters a couple, few years ago, and there's the garage as well. Here, this is the property, it's, hopefully you can see it on your screen, it's, you know, it's, like I said, it's pretty elaborate landscaping, this is to the left where the driveway is, right back here is where we're putting, requesting the garage. There's a pretty tall, dense ficus hedge here that they're going to trim up and, but again, did not want to remove. Here's stepping up the garage, right about here is, I'm sorry, the driveway, right about here is where the front garage door will be. So the garage is now setback from the house, if we actually had to design something to meet that fifth, the rear yard slash side yard setback, we would have the opportunity to put that garage a lot closer to Colonial, which we did not want to do. And this is the backyard corner where all that landscape is going, right, basically in this green areas where they were requesting to do the garage. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. We'll ask if the board has any questions for the applicant, I'll start off with Vice Chair Cameron.
No questions.
Okay, board member Picotte?
So, just to confirm, none of the landscaping is actually going to be taken out, it's just going to go in that empty space?
Yeah, actually, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, board member Savage?
Just to clarify, what would the, what is the variance that should be and then what it's asking, what is it asking for, I guess, with that red line, I was a little confused.
Yeah, the red line is trying to show you where the rear, the required today code rear setback line is. We're actually there, you know, the edge of ours is here, so we're, it's an 11-foot required, 11-foot eight required setback versus my five foot six that we're asking for.
Thank you.
Okay, and board member Fields?
No questions.
Okay, and I have no questions of the applicant, thank you. So we'll now ask staff to come forward and please make your presentation.
Ann Wolski for the record, ZBA case number 3441 at 308 Colonial Road. Subject property is .29 acres and SF-7 surrounding all residential. So the request is for rear setback variance, which is 10% of the lot depth at 11.7, which is the requirement, the applicant is providing 5.6 and the variance request is 6.1. Here are some site photos, where the driveway leads to pretty much is where the applicant is proposing the garage. The home was built in the 1950s, the access to the driveway is pretty much the only viable location for this. The front yard is operating as the side corner yard, which is along Colonial and the front yard is actually Martin Avenue. And the applicant pretty much went over what the layout would be, so this is just a graphic showing what that request is. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that the rear setback variance only applies to the proposed addition and that any future addition and accessory structure shall meet the standards in the ZLDRs.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the board if they've got any questions for staff, so I'll start off with board member Picotte, please.
No questions.
Okay, board member Savage?
Was the neighbor, like, asked or notified of this request?
Yes, all property owners within 500 feet of the, of this particular property received the notice in the mail.
Was there any response?
I got a few calls, just for clarification on the mailer, and I sent some plans out and communicated, but no objections.
Thank you.
Board member Fields?
Yes, they, I'm assuming and just asking that the owner was made aware and clear that this only, that there will be a condition placed on this approval.
Yes.
So for further construction or changes.
Okay. Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
Sure, if this was a side setback, what would be the regulation for that?
For the?
For the property, instead of a rear setback, do you know?
So the side setback is, I believe, five feet.
Okay.
Yeah, it's five feet. The corner is 12 and a half.
Yeah, so this is a technicality where the side is being treated as the back.
Pretty much, yes.
All right, thank you, no other questions.
Okay, and, yeah, my, I would have had the same question, and I just wanted to confirm the front door of the property faces Colonial?
Correct, that is correct, I have the plan up.
Okay, so what, and yet the Colonial front edge is being considered the side, although the front door is there.
Yes, because it's longer, so the narrowest one along Martin is considered the front and the opposite of Martin is the rear.
Yep, okay. Yeah, no further questions of staff. I've not received any cards on this item, but I will go ahead and open the public hearing, so if anyone is here in the audience and wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll ask staff if there were any emails, voicemails, or other communication that were received that need to be entered into the record?
No.
Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant if you've got a rebuttal or any final closing marks or remarks to make. I will ask if you don't mind just come to the microphone and confirm, Mr. Fields pointed out that there is one condition that was, that was recommended by staff and just confirm that you're okay with, or have no objection to the condition.
Yeah, that's correct, we have no objection.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to executive session, I'll start off, just for any final remarks, comments, or discussion, I'll go ahead and start off with our board member Savage.
No comment.
Okay, and board member Fields?
No comments.
Vice Chair Cameron?
No comments.
Okay, and board member Picotte?
No comments.
Okay, I have no comments or further discussion for the board either, so at this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3441, a request by Jeffrey Brasser of Daly Jettison Architect PA for a variance from section 94-72A2C of the city's zoning and land development regulations for the construction of an additional, addition to a single-family residence. The motion is being made, the motion is based upon testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report which constitute competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the criteria in article two, section 94-38d six of the city of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met. In addition, the granting of the variance is made conditional upon the following restrictions, stipulations, and/or safeguards that I move are necessary to ensure compliance with the proposed and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city of West Palm Beach. The rear setback variance shall only apply to a proposed addition. Future additions and accessory structures shall meet the standards in the zoning and land development regulations.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion is made by board member Fields and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. I'll ask our board secretary to please call the roll.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Christopher Cammerer?
Yes.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Dana Picotte?
Yes.
Emilyne Savage?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is approved, five to zero, congrats. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda, that is item number, sorry, is ZBA case number 3443. I'll ask our board secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Michael Bates for a variance from section 94-482A of the city zoning and land development regulations to allow for a reduction in the required landscape area in the front yard of a single-family residence located within a single-family high-density SF-14 residential district. The subject property consisting of approximately .14 acres is located at 371 East Lakewood Road within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. I will start off first with a presentation by the applicant.
Hello, my name is Michael Bates, I'm rebuilding my personal residence here and we're applying to build a driveway here. Excuse me. The width, as you can see, of these two garages is 20 feet, so we're proposing to build a 20-foot driveway, 20-foot wide driveway. The reason for the variance is it is in violation of code section 94-482. That code essentially states that the front landscaped area needs to be 75% of the front area of the house. So the front area of the house is 1,250 square feet, and the driveway's about 500 square feet, so that leaves 750 feet of landscaped area, so we're a little bit short of the required size. These are the architectural plans, again, these are the two garages right here, as you can see they're 20-foot wide, the 20-foot wide driveway is in regulation, we're just violating the square footage of the landscaped area. This is a survey of the house, as you can see, it's only 50-foot wide. Another thing to point out is that the homes currently through SF-14 are zoned for 60-foot wide houses, so the lot of the house is actually narrower than the requirement to build a house currently, so that also makes it a challenge to meet the requirements. So given the narrow width, achieving both the necessary driveway dimensions for functional use and compliance with landscaping requirement is impractical. So this is just kind of a little summary of the measurements, the front yard is 1,250 square feet, driveway is 500 square feet, so that's about 40% of the front yard, and the landscaped area is only about 60%. So ultimately, we're just seeking a variance to build a driveway within the 20-foot width to, to make it functional for the new house. This is the site plan, so currently, as you saw in the picture, there's no driveway. We're planning to build the driveway right here, it's going to be non-permeable pavers. That's the presentation, I affirm that the variance sought is necessary, will not adversely impact the neighborhood or surrounding properties, the proposed driveway dimensions are essential to accommodate the attendant use of the property. Thank you, any questions?
Okay, thank you. I'll start off with board member Fields, with any questions of the applicant?
No question at the time.
Okay, Vice Chair Cameron?
No questions.
Board member Burgess?
No questions.
Okay, board member Picotte?
No questions.
And board member Savage?
No questions.
I don't have any questions, well, sorry, I do have one question. It was specified that non-pervious pavers are being specified, is there, was any consideration made for pervious pavers, or?
So, this is my personal residence, we lived here 12 years, we knocked it over, rebuilding it, my first development project, we actually already bought all the driveway materials before realizing this was a factor, so we're essentially applying to, to meet the, meet the needs just because we have the materials already.
Understood, okay, yeah, part of the question is, you know, landscaping serves a couple of functions, one is certainly aesthetic and buffering of, but another is to provide, you know, infiltration into the, you know, into the recharge into the ground, so that was the question, but understood that the materials have been purchased. Okay, thank you. We'll ask our staff now to come forward and make a presentation, please.
Hello again, Ann Wolski for the record, ZBA case number 3443, for a variance request at 371 East Lakewood. The request is for a variance in the south side of the property residence, excuse me, okay, and the front yard, 75% of the front yard area is supposed to be landscaped, which is a total of 937.5 square feet, the applicant is providing 750 square feet, which is 80% of what is required. The variance request is for a 20% reduction of 187.5 square feet. And here is just the site plan which shows pretty much the layout, and just wanted to highlight that the driveway meets the setback requirements and also the maximum width allowed for the driveway in the zoning district. The only concern that, or the only thing that they're requesting is for the lock coverage, the front landscape coverage reduction. And therefore staff is recommending approval with the condition that the variance is relating to, the landscape area shall only apply to the proposed driveway.
Okay, thank you. I'll now turn over the board for questions of staff, start off with Vice Chair Cameron, any questions of city staff?
No questions.
Okay, board member Burgess?
Remind me, in single-family 14, there's no pervious versus impervious code requirement, right? There's just an open space requirement past the front setback?
Right, for the front, yes.
So it's only really in the front setback where you have any recognition of kind of pervious versus impervious surfaces, right?
Correct, that's the only thing in the code.
So the variance being 20% more than that with the layout of the site, it looks like there's additional pervious space behind the front setback. That could help with the infiltration rates on the site.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, no other questions for staff.
Board member Picotte?
The application, applicant is aware of the conditions and okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you, just for clarification, thank you.
We received the staff report as well.
Okay, and I'll turn over to first alternate Savage.
No questions.
Okay, board member Fields?
Question, maybe I missed it, is there a walkway from the driveway to the front door?
No.
So, the condition that we'll be adding would disallow any additional walking path at this point, so I just want to make sure we're clear. Am I missing it, or am I clear on it, that there is no walkway that goes from the driveway to the front door? And if one is to be installed, we'll be right back here again looking for another.
Right. Michael.
So let's make sure we're all on the same page here before we get there.
I didn't include that in the plans, because I thought it was really just for the driveway, but we do plan to build squares with grass in between as a little walkway to the front.
So, my question to staff then, how would that affect this? Or would that?
We would have to get the dimensions and pretty much rework the numbers for, to adjust the request.
So are we prepared to move forward with this request if that's going to be a future request?
Would you want to move forward with the request as is and come back, should that be?
Sure. It's a, it's a very small walkway and can't imagine it'd be more than.
It would still trigger the need to come back.
Okay.
Yeah, we recognize Ms. Jones, please.
Angela Van Panen, zoning administrator. The problem is you're right at the code requirements for the driveway, if you add any more concrete, paper bricks and all, you're not going to meet the code requirements. So we recommend that you go back and say everything you want now. What do you want, what do you need for your, for your walkway, for everything now, include it in the variance, then you're done.
Okay.
Because the problem is when you get an inspection and the inspector go out there and doesn't meet that, you're back here again. That's what they were trying to say, you're back here again.
And to clarify, does it save the applicant time to amend his application to include those, as opposed to having to refile a new application?
Correct, it's continuing, I don't think he knows now what he's doing, we need to We need the specific numbers. So I would recommend that you continue it, come back next month, have everything you want, outlay out everything you want, and then we can go forth and then you get approval for everything that you need.
Okay. So we can move forward with the driveway and we'll come back and do the, the walkway? If approved?
Just to clarify, I believe what staff was recommending was that this case be continued, meaning that it would be postponed, uh, to the next month's meeting in order to allow you to amend your application to include, um, the pavers being sought after, that you're seeking to add, uh, the stepping stones, uh, to the front door that you're seeking to add. Because otherwise, if you receive an approval today, you would have to file a new application, correct me if I'm wrong, um, that would then seek to amend it further and go, you know, basically start at the beginning of the process again with that application.
Okay.
So I'll ask the, uh, the applicant, would you, uh, are you okay with a continuation being postponed to the next, uh, to the November meeting?
Yeah, that's probably the best bet.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And staff is in agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I'll go ahead and, um, I think that's, well, actually, let me, let's finish questions for staff because what we'd also like to do is make sure if there are further comments up here from the board that those get addressed as well, um, so that, you know, you can make sure to, if, if you need to amend anything else, uh, that we get that all on the record now.
Okay.
Uh, so we'll go ahead and continue with, uh, board questions for the applicant and then, uh, then decide how to proceed. Um, Board Member Fields, any further questions?
No further questions.
Okay. Vice Chair Cameron?
No further questions.
Okay. And I lost track, but I started with you, right, Jonathan? Or did I?
I do have another question.
Okay.
I'll get a chance. Thanks. Uh, just to, when it comes back before us, if we could get an understanding of the, uh, the walking steps, uh, being more pervious in nature because there's space, permeable space in between the impermeable surfaces. At what point does that walkway become a pervious system which is treated separately than, uh, hardscape, impervious hardscape? And I think the numbers should reflect what's being treated as pervious versus impervious within the front setback to help us make a better decision on the impact to the overall landscape requirement in the front yard.
Thank you.
Good point. Um, any other questions from board members for staff or the applicant? Okay. Um, I will go ahead and, uh, also just to open the public hearing in case there are members of the public here. We do not, I do not have any cards, but I'll go ahead and open it. Anybody wishing to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none. Uh, did staff have any, uh, emails, phone calls, or any other items to enter into the record?
No.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing and at this point entertain, well, rather than, uh, have further discussion, we'll just go ahead and entertain a motion to, uh, to continue the case.
I move that we, uh, continue, uh, case, uh, ZBA case number 344, one, no, I'm sorry.
3443.
3443, until next, uh, meeting.
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Fields and seconded by Vice Chair Cameron. Um, we'll, uh, just go ahead and, uh, take a voice vote. All in favor of, uh, continuing this case to the November meeting, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. Um, the case is continued to the November ZBA meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks. Okay, with that, uh, that was the last item on our agenda. There's, uh, no unfinished business noted on the agenda. I'll recognize, uh, Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to mention to the board, if you're interested, on October 24th at 8:30 in this room, we're going to have our next developer outreach meeting. That is something we've been doing over the last 11 years, every six months. It's a mini state-of-the-city address, just talking about what's going on in the city with projects. Our fiscal year just ended September 30th last week, so I'll give a end-of-the-year summary, but it's, it's been impressive as the what's happened. The two biggest months in building permit revenue in the history of the city occurred in August and September, just, uh, a month or two ago, so it's, it's not slowing down. But if you're interested, more than welcome to attend. Thank you.